Great. Morning, everyone. Everyone here, anybody that's zooming in, we are here for a first notice of special town meeting, and I will ask our town clerk to read the notice of the meeting.
Okay. Notice is hereby given that a special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings in the town of Guilford, Connecticut, will be held in the Selectment Meeting Room 31 Park Street, Guilford, Connecticut, on Monday, October 6, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. to consider and act on the following: Acceptance of five temporary construction easements for the Falcon Road project over, under, and across portions of the following properties pending recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission under Connecticut General Statute 8-24 and in accordance with Town Charter 7-7. 51 Falcon Road, Smith, Assessor's Map 002, Lot 41, Hassan, 3 Walden Hill Road, Hassan, 50 Falcon Road, Drew, 103 Falcon Road, Assagian's Head Association.
May I have a nomination for an appointment of a chair for the meeting?
No, lady.
My second.
Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Take it. Um, so, we have our town engineer here to explain what's going on and what we need.
Correct. Good morning. We need these temporary construction easements because we're replacing the seawall and elevating the road. Right now, the road is in disrepair. It's down to one lane from previous damage we've had. And we're going through the state of Connecticut. They're funding the project and upwards about $7 million. Uh, we're ready to go out to bid, um, pending their approval. One of the pieces is to formally file all of these easements. I met with all the property owners and went over the project and impacts to their property, and they've all been in agreement to sign off on these easements.
Any questions from the audience? Anyone? Anyone? No? Any questions from anyone who's online, zooming in? I don't see any indication? Okay. Any, any questions from the board?
Yeah, we will.
Just a comment that this is a positive thing.
Yeah.
People that live around there have suffered quite a bit with the road issue, and it's been fixed in the past, but this, from Janus's descriptions, I mean, we don't know 100%, but this sounds like it's gonna take a trek for quite a while.
If you've driven down there, through that area, you know the need for this, and thanks for getting this all together. Um, okay.
Well, let's just see, I mean, the point, what is the timeline for the public?
Uh, pending approval from DOT to advertise, we're gonna advertise as soon as we can, and construction will start as soon as it can. There may be the ability to do some work outside of the typical construction season, um, and especially since the road is already compromised. Um, and then, uh, we will certainly be under full construction with concrete work and such happening uh, next construction season, which is typically April to the end of November is when you're, you know.
So this time next year, close to completion?
That's the whole.
According to.
Yeah, going into, yeah, going into the winter season. Yes.
Comment, just to avoid any misunderstanding of the public, we're not here to approve the project. We're here to approve the easements, which is required under our charter as a real estate transaction.
And.
Correct.
Thank you to everyone who agreed to the easements.
Yes.
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 Property owners that agreed to the easements, because that's an important piece of this.
It is very important, and they waive compensation and such, too. They, you know, it's a don, it's a kind of donation of their land for us to do this project, which is great. We're not gonna retain any permanent ownership. It's, you know, it's just for temporary construction.
It's finite. It's ending specified.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Point. Okay. Any other comments or questions? You know, call or vote. Everyone, uh, in favor of the town acquiring these easements, say aye? Aye. Any opposed?
We vote?
Yes.
After some town meeting.
Yeah, remember this from the last one.
Anybody else? So, all right, everybody, thank you. Uh, any, having no other business with regard to this town meeting, I will ask for both to adjourn.
Some move.
We will adjourn. Aye, aye. Thank you, everybody. Thanks. Team. All right. Let's move us on to our, uh, next matter, which is our regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Anna.
You just.
No, welcome to.
But you.
That's okay. Thank you.
So we'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
We will, uh, start with public forum on any matter of interest to the community this morning. We'll sort of go out of sequence a little bit, so does anybody have any interest, uh, speaking in public forum? Can you just come on up and identify where you live and your name?
Hi, Julie Schlassel, and I'm on Stepstone Hill Road in Guilford. And, uh, thank you for letting me speak, uh, early at the beginning of my sentence.
Sure.
Um, but I'm here to speak for a lot of the people who play pickleball and also represent the people that, um, play basketball and other, um, activities at Bitner Park. Uh, so, we are regular visitors and active members of the Guilford community who use Bitner Park for pickleball, skateboarding, disc golf, hiking, biking, rollerblading, basketball, and other family activities. We are asking the town to take action to fix the parking law. This current condition is a real concern for everyone's safety and enjoyment. There are other issues that need to be addressed, like lighting, bathrooms, and shelter. Bitner Park brings together people from Guilford and nearby towns for recreational community events. However, the parking lot is unpaved and full of potholes, dust, and dirt, making it unsafe for drivers and pedestrians. These potholes can damage cars and make it difficult for children and older adults to get around safely. Um, according to the data from the National Asphalt Pavement Association, well-maintained parking areas can significantly improve safety and accessibility, leading to increased usage and satisfaction among visitors. Paving the parking lot at Bitner Park would not only enhance its appearance, but also ensure a safer, more welcoming environment for everyone. Public works needs to be relocated to a non-public area. We urge the town to allocate the necessary resources to pave the parking lot at Bitner, and we ask the town to set aside funds to pave the parking lot and invest in this vital infrastructure. This investment will help keep our community healthy, safe, and happy. If you care about making our park better, please take action. Today, we can make Bitner Park a safer and more beautiful place for everyone. If you have any questions.
Thank you, though. Wonderful. Thank you.
So, thank you. I know it was on the budget, and then, you know. Now, hopefully it gets.
There was a bathroom structure at 102, but the numbers went crazy. I don't remember the parking, but it's well, it's well, oh, wait, there's some.
It was in the budget. It was. It was. And last.
On the capital plan?
For fiscal '26, which we're currently in that.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it back in.
Thank you. Uh, we've opened it to, uh, any agenda item, or, excuse me, any item. So if anyone who wants to speak in public forum, go ahead.
Do you have an agenda item?
Well, it's, it's all good. We were just trying to help out the agendas here a little bit.
Aw, that's terrible.
I ask your. I asked your approval on.
Sorry, we know you Gloria, but for the meeting, can you just say your name and address?
Gloria Nemchuk, 284 School Sideline. Um, Agenda Item 7.6, Appointment of Cindy Preble to the Guilford Housing Authority. Um, there is a Republican on there, me, and, uh, another one. Um, she is a Republican, but we need, there's only a five-member board. We do need three people. We have one vacant seat. She is replacing, um, one person on there who is a Republican. So I asked you, even though, uh, we have two Republicans, this is a board that works independent of any party, and we need to conduct business. We need at least three people. So I urge you to, uh, approve her application.
She would be the third Republican.
Um, no, to, one is leaving. It's, uh, I'm the Republican, and another one who is, is leaving this month.
So out of the five-member board, there can be, there can be three. If, if the total allows.
Yeah, yes. So there is an independent now, and there is a vacant seat.
Mm-hmm.
And there is the resident who, uh, no party affiliation with that. But sometimes some of us.
How many, there's five-member board?
Yes.
How many people are on the board in total, just so, if you know?
Right now, there's four.
Okay. And you're just speaking in favor of Ms. Preble's.
Yes. Just, uh, as soon as, as soon as you can, so we could go on with business.
What is the relation of the?
This, this month. I don't know if she put in her, um.
Okay, I see the problem. So you're at four, you're at risk of dropping to three.
Yes.
With four for the time being until this next position is.
Yes, and, you know, sometimes people don't, the, the resident sometimes doesn't come, and another person doesn't come, so we need to have a backup that we have at least three on there.
Political party.
No. No, they, they vote on the resident. The, the residents themselves.
So there's five people. One is in, one is a resident who's not in the party mix. In the political party.
Correct.
So then, right now, you're, you're a Republican, Cindy is an R, and then there's an I, and then there's, there's another opening, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I urge you to approve that, so we could go on with business.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Public forum on any item? Might as well.
David Janus, this 18 Sugarloaf Road. Um, so I do agree about the, um, paving of the parking lot, and if some, at some point, we could put that in the budget and not outrage this.
Parking lot.
It would be great. I do walk, I do walk there. It's, it's pretty, I mean, somebody can definitely roll an ankle. Um, the other item I would like to suggest is I did, um, submit the application for Cindy Preble, and I do feel that is an important position. I also feel that she, um, just, um, was on and getting voted on the Housing Authority Commission.
Yes, she's a member of the Affordable.
Affordable Housing Commission, and that, that.
But then, that'll knock her off, I think.
Because I don't think we can, I think we.
Okay, we have to look into that. I have to check the ordinance and the charter of the AHC, because I know we need a representative from the Affordable Housing Commission to the, from, excuse me, a representative from the Guilford Housing Authority, which you are.
Yes, correct.
To the Affordable Housing. And I thought there was something in some of the rules about people on the Housing Authority not being able to serve except as a liaison to the AHC, so we gotta check that one, unless she then would have to resign. I mean, it's possible she might have to resign her membership in the AHC, which we also have problems. I don't mean it's a problem, but we also are trying to keep a balance there of party representation, so I would hate to lose her, because.
Uh, she's probably the only, um, or she may be one of two.
There is, there is another R.
Yeah, one of two. One of two.
Yeah, I know, but then we need, well, anyway, it's, we.
You want the two R's.
Getting representation from the Republicans. I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying it.
I understand.
So if we lose, uh, well, we'll have to check all of this, but I don't think we can approve it today until we check it, because I, I know when we went through the formation of the commission, there were some conflicts with other commissions, not made by us, but existing, so.
Well, we can, we, well, we get it on the.
Yeah, we'll get through to each other. We got to.
Like, some, I know that, so the Affordable Housing Commission requires one person from the Guilford Housing Commission to be on there.
As a liaison.
But I, yes, but I don't believe there's any restriction on someone from the Housing Authority being on the Affordable Housing.
Okay.
Why, I'm questioning, why would there be?
Uh, it's not a restriction that was.
Five laws are working.
It's, it's, I just, we need to check with Peter Barrett. It's not a restriction that the members of the Affordable Housing Commission was, was, it's not something we were trying to restrict. It was something that seemed to exist, so we need to check it.
We, we, okay, we'll, we'll, I have a few thoughts that we can take up on this, on the agenda. I got it. You guys are both in favor. Thank you. Helpful. Anybody else for anything else?
I'm, I'm not done.
Okay.
So, uh, so I, I also, I, I know that, um, on the Police Commission that as of June, um, there were supposed to be two openings, because, uh, terms had run up, and I know that there were various reasons why the board felt that they should keep the people that were on the Police Commission on the Police Commission. Um, I just want to reiterate that we did, um, give you two very well-qualified applicants' names. I know that, um, there are three Democrats, which is a quorum. There's a total of five on that commission. An independent has been, um, voted on and approved to be on that commission. There is one seat left. I am asking that you, um, create diversity and approve one of our Republican members to that commission. Um, and I would also like to mention that there are, let's see, 6,500 voting Democrats, and you have your three people on that commission. Um, um, there are 3,635 Republicans. There is no representation as of now. I think there are about 320 to 350 independents, and you do have, they do have representation right now. There are 6,823 registered unaffiliated voters. I will assume that some of those unaffiliated voters are also Republican voters. I have a relative who worked for the union and wanted to be unaffiliated, because it didn't help him out to be registered to one party. I am sure there are more people like that in the 6,800 in town. I feel it's extremely important to have Republican representation on that Police Commission. I also would like to say that the people that, um, we did put in for that commission, one of them, um, when he gives his resume, um, states that he developed and chairs Safety Committee for, um, a school along with the Hampton Police Department, that, um, he's done multiple charitable projects with Worthhaven Police Department. Um, he's completed the Civilian Police Academy for the Guilford Police Department. He's a Big Brother volunteer. Um, I'd like to mention that both our people are extremely professional. I feel that they can separate their personal lives from their professional lives, and that they are in the positions they are because they can do that, and they have people under them that they probably have to keep that distance from, and that I feel that these two people are professional enough to do that. So I hope that you would keep that in mind when you're ready to make that appointment. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Okay, so we've had lively public forum, which is great. Uh, anybody else? Anybody online? Okay, great. Um, first item then is approval of the September 12 special meeting. Now, it's gonna get a motion.
Some moved.
Second. Questions or comments on these?
I'm not sure. I've navigated away from it. I don't have it open. I don't think that the whole is motion in the second, but it doesn't, doesn't mean anything, so nothing says that in there. We try to get back into it.
Let me see here. Four, what's, let me see, I got it. Motion. That's the answer. That was a transfer. There were motions.
Motion moved and seconded, but it doesn't.
Which one?
Um, not the motion to adjourn, the other motion. It's just the two.
Right above it, on page five. To accept the contract to acquit, ter, relocation. It, it says moved and seconded, but that, it doesn't, it should say motion approved.
It should.
Oh, yeah, that is definitely missing. So on page five, we're gonna add in, uh.
Working.
Ask unanimously.
Yeah.
Okay. Good point. Anything else? Anybody?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to approve, seconded, one comment change. All in favor of the minutes as adjusted?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, September 15 regular meeting. Yeah, motion?
Some moved.
Good, thank you.
New changes, you usually notice them.
I, that, yeah.
I'm not as good as yours.
Sorry, sorry. Um, I, I believe I did have one. Give me one second. I apologize.
Well.
I, I lost that. I apologize. It was nothing, it was nothing worth shaking. It didn't affect, you know, documentation, the actions or anything like that.
Okay, uh, with that, any, uh, no changes recommended? All in favor of the minutes as drafted? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Kevin, you are here. Consider take possible action on conservation events for bluffhead subdivision section nine. I'll read these addresses. 450 Bluffview Drive, 105 Blue Hills Drive, 123 Blue Hills Drive, 147 Blue Hills Drive, and send to Planning and Zoning Commission for mandate. I'm not sure what that word.
Mandatory referral.
Thank you.
24. And actually, you need to set a town meeting date.
Okay, very good.
For approval.
So.
So, back in 2009, Inland Wetlands and Bore Select, or, and Planning and Zoning Commission approved conservation easements for this, um, bluffhead section, subdivision section nine, which is all the way at the end of Blue Hills Drive, and a piece of it connects to the end of Blue Hills or Bluffview Drive. Um, as part of that, prior to the issuance of a building permit for properties where these conservation easements are attached to, um, they need to file the, um, document, the conservation easement written language into the, um, land records. The subdivision map has it noted, uh, as a conservation easement, uh, in these notation of the map, uh, conservation easement is noted on individual property deeds. Um, we now have houses going in for construction and looking for building permits, uh, which now need the formal conservation easement filed on the land records for the properties. Uh, fortunately, we're dealing with four property owners on this one, um, versus, um, we, working on changing, or actually worked on changing the process for conservation easements, where these would get filed on land records at the time of the following of the subdivision map. Um, so we're not chasing around individual property owners, especially one that developer sells off the lots, and now it goes into private hands. So the, uh, what we're looking, what I'm looking for is basically approval to move this to town meeting for approval, uh, um, finalize approval of the conservation easements, where they have the language drafted and placed in the land records. I have submitted, I think you have a, a draft copy of the, um, easement, which is, um, um, asked to the different property owners to sign, and then they'll get filed in the land records, uh, following our review of the document once I sign it. And then basically, the easement basically indicates, um, um, what's allowed, um, what the property owner is allowed to do within the easement, um, like putting up birdhouses and some passive recreation, walking through the property there, and the provisions of, um, clearing, digging, driving vehicles and stuff through the easement area there, and then also notes, um, a process if there's any violation discovered. Um, it's a unique conservation easement area where it was drafted up, that it's the first 25 feet in front of the wetlands area is conservation easement. Once you hit the concept of the wetlands area, it's, uh, a non-conservation easement area. It's just a regulated area under wetlands. Um, so.
And, um, um, just tell me what the specific purpose of the town taking this easement is? I mean, there's a lot of discussion about fences and such. What's the purpose? Town's objective?
The, the purpose of it is to provide a buffer to the wetlands, that 25 feet of non-activity.
In addition to standard wetlands.
The standard, yeah, the standard wetlands restriction is, is the wetlands area itself, but there's no real restrictions on wetlands. You can come in front of the commission for approval of work within a wetlands area or the review area.
Yeah, the review area is just so everybody, 100 feet.
100 feet out from the wetlands, uh, where you need permission to do work. Uh, so if somebody wanted to, they can go and ask the commission, I wanna put a shed within 25 feet of the wetland, 20 feet of the wetlands, and they could, with this conservation easement in place, they cannot put that shed within 25 feet of the wetlands. They cannot put a brush within 25 feet of the wetlands. Uh, where.
Not adding 25 feet to the 100 feet.
No.
It's just hyper restricting the 25.
It's adding to the restriction of right adjacent to the wetlands.
Okay.
Can't do certain activities there.
Which they could have applied and possibly gotten permission, but with this.
This is making it.
Hands off.
Bright, a bright line.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and, and there's a lot of communication.
And they, originally, the Wetlands Commission, and through Planning and Zoning, had wanted, uh, a split rail fence, which is a positive visual barricade into that area. Uh, the developer came back a couple of years later, I think it was 2012, indicating that they, um, that it's too much of a burden, um, so the commission changed it to allow post every 25, 50 feet along that boundary line with signs on it. Uh, so that's the current, um, requirement there.
Yeah, the only question is, is this gonna be in their, in the backyards of these lots?
Correct.
Side.
Backyard of the lots, yeah.
So the lots are just along, and this is.
The lots front is.
Packing up to the.
Correct. Yep, yep, there, I can show you. Sorry for the viewers at home. I don't have a line here, but so the conservation easement is this darker hedge line here. It's all the houses and stuff. Here's a road. So all the houses would be forward to this. There's no crossing of that at all. So this is the wetlands with the arrows pointing towards the wetlands, and then this outer, outer line is the 25, so between here and here is what would be, would be the easement area there. So.
And it's.
Yeah. So, so your wetlands, narrow, and then the conservation easement extends from here to here around this whole.
It's part of the party deed, so they wouldn't know it. Have these lots been purchased, you know?
Yeah, these lots have been all purchased, correct.
So this is a burden that the new, that the owners did not know when they bought it.
Their, their deeds indicate there is a conservation easement on their property, according to map 5126 filed on the land records.
And what's the existing easement? That, that the town has an easement for potential future purposes, including this restriction?
The easement is this conservation easement, which is on the map, but it hasn't had the, I'm gonna say, the rules and regulations for the easement filed on the land records, to put it as a.
This, this level of specificity.
Correct.
So the owners knew about the easement, were just finalized.
Correct, correct, yes. I, hopefully their attorneys told them about any, you know. It is in, it is in the land records.
I asked you something today. Are we going to be creating a potential legal commotion?
No, but it is in their.
There's already the easement.
The easement on the map is on the land records, and their deeds reference the map.
Worried me when you said you hope that they've been done.
Do you never know what happens at closing? What is revealed, but it is on their documents that they sign and they close. I researched a couple.
That they signed and closed.
Yes.
How many, um, are ours?
There's four properties.
Oh, I thought there was five.
There's four properties. There's 105, 123, 147, Blue Hills, and then there's 450 Bluffview.
Should, would it be normal to just give them a notification of some kind?
They've been, I've actually, they all been emailed the document.
To this meeting?
They all been emailed the conservation easement document for them to sign and return to me. I received one of them back at the.
Oh, I see. You need to get something back from them. So at the time, at the time of the town meeting, that would, if somebody had an issue, it would come up then?
Uh, we have, how were there five? You showed me three on the map.
There's three on Blue Hills and one at, one on Bluffview.
Oh, the other side, okay.
Have, have these houses, houses haven't even been built yet, right?
That's okay.
One got built, uh, which we missed when it came in for billing permit. And the other three, uh, are pen, are, two have billing permits that are, we haven't issued yet until this gets sent through.
Appreciate that. We're cleaning up some paperwork here. I wouldn't mind having some reassurance that we're not creating ourselves a debacle.
Legal issue. Is there a ti- time sensitivity? I mean, can we?
Um, there is time sensitivity, because this building permit's waiting to come through.
For the same people who haven't returned the.
Well.
Ones come through, we're ready, that's returned it.
Potential commotion doubt. We still have to do it.
It is part of the subdivision approval, which was gone through the process.
Yeah.
It's something I work with. It's something I work with the, the hurdles when they, when they come up with Peter.
Yeah, no, I, 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 and I understand Charles anxiety. I mean, in a, in a time machine perfect world, all these restrictions would have been in place before people purchased these properties and that, that specific I'm not even gonna call it problem, because my guess is a lot of people appreciate the wild aspect of the property.
Especially when they think purchasing something, and they're purchasing something else.
Yeah, so.
That's the reality.
I just would feel like it's really important to make sure these specific people have specific confirmed knowledge of that town meeting when it comes along.
Yes.
Somebody doesn't say, I mean, really double, double check. It's the whole deal with certified mail. Emails are fine, but emails go into the ether.
I just point.
From the developer.
They are, they are confirmed, I mean.
I mean, they, they have to sign the easement document as the owners of the property.
Yeah.
So they're gonna be, just like the easements I acquired earlier, the, the history I found here in Guilford is there was a lot of actions by the planning and zoning commission that created easements on property by virtue of maps, but never never had legal documents that went along with it, that, that described, you know, responsibilities and rights, which is a typical way of doing easements. So it leaves open a lot of confusion, but these folks are being presented with the actual legal document that you're gonna eventually approve through town meeting.
Yeah.
To be filed on the land record. So they, they have to be, um, agreeable to it because they have to sign the document. And then if they're not agreeable, I'm sure you'll hear from them at the town meeting.
They have the advantage of a restriction on their property balanced by restrictions on neighboring properties that will help them. I don't think anybody really wants to develop that close to these.
Yeah, and, and it also just clarifies what the rights and responsibilities are as opposed to just a line like he showed you drawn on a map and says conservation easement. What does that mean? You know, so it's, it's, it's a win-win and, and, and they should have been aware of the conservation easement through the fact that the you know, the map is actually filed on the land record showing that easement area.
The only thing that's a painting red flag to that conversation is the fact that the developer has already said he didn't want to put a fence line up. Now, I don't know what the contour is there, I don't know what the the vegetation is like, uh, along that wetlands or not, but the fact that developer didn't want to do that, I'm, I'm hoping, you know, I can appreciate the reality of that they signed it, that they bought it, that they quote unquote were supposed to be aware, that stack of documents that this existed. But, the reality of it is, did they know? Or did they understand what? And that's, uh, that's the only worry I have, which is tempered by the bottom line is I think this is inevitable, I think it's gotta be done to protect the wetlands, et cetera. But I don't wanna open us up. In one respect, I don't wanna open us up to a legal confrontation, but by the same side, we've already done that. You know, we're, we're down the path.
Yeah, we're down the path. I mean, that fence has been pulled out because of the concern long-term maintenance and stuff by the developer, so it came down to.
There's a certain logic to that, there's also a certain logic to, I don't wanna tell everybody what they're not buying.
Yeah.
Well, it's like I said, it's in their, it's in their deed. That they were conservation. Yes.
So wait, the town has an important interest.
Yes.
These landowners have a very specific interest that they're gonna be acutely aware of. I'm just gonna repeat myself and say, I wanna make sure we get this meeting, and nobody says I didn't know if there was a meeting about my property, that they are there or present or accounted for.
Yeah, I think we can make a motion to pass this on the condition that, you know, they are notified again of what the property lines are and what, uh, this easement, but.
But at, at the town meeting, if we have one signed set of documents and four in limbo, then we're going to, then the town meeting can act on just the one, we can't act.
You're approving the, the town taking the easements, you're not approving the, the, the signed document, you're approving the, the function of a, the, the document that we have being filed on the land records. And then once we get them, then they get filed as they come in after that point.
There's nothing more step.
Just this common sense, if, if the people that haven't signed it yet, after a period of, a reasonable period of time, wouldn't you reach out and call them?
Yeah, and they're not getting their building permit.
Right, but I mean, can we?
That's pretty, that's pretty.
That's kind of.
They're not getting a building permit.
That's not harsh, Kevin, I, I just.
No, no, it's, that is, that is what the, what the document says, is prior to the issuance of a building permit, this document needs to be filed on the land record.
Like you said, we already missed one.
Right, but we could do it in a way, just wanna remind you that we need you to sign this so that the building permit can go forward, you know, it's just a positive play.
Right.
Or so, I, do you have any questions, you know, that kind of.
Um, I think it takes a, cause it's get advertised in the courier. And my understanding, it's probably a month out because of the timing to get it in the courier. Uh, I think it's, uh, I think two months, I think two weeks is too close, I think.
And they will be notified of the town meeting directly.
Correct, you know, they'll be emailed and lettered.
I mean, at that point in time.
Hi, this is Karen, so generally.
Are we willing to move this forward?
Oh, Karen's got a point here in the town meeting.
No, no, I just wanted to say, um, town council, I don't think has had a chance to prepare. Usually you have a legal notice that town council has prepared.
Yeah.
And I don't think he's had an opportunity to do that yet.
Right.
Um, so, uh, you may wanna, uh, you can always have a special meeting to approve it if you wanna table it until Peter can prepare the town meeting notice, and that will have the actual date on it.
I'm just checking our minutes from September fifteenth. That's what we had for the town meeting we had today. We had everything in place, so the, the schedule and, and really the double focus, I mean, there's no need to wait for this paperwork to make sure these people understand this.
Oh, yeah, and then contact with them, I mean.
Good.
I think for one, it's generally played out there for a month from now and then your next meeting coming up. Gives Brendan a chance to get the, the notice in the spot reserved in the paper and then.
Okay, well, my suggestion is that we have a motion table and that we inch, Kevin coordinate with town council or, you know, that's office here. And make sure that we have a specific notice, uh, proposed notice available to us for our next meeting in two weeks.
Yeah.
And that we can, you know, we can move this forward then.
We've got special meetings.
And if, if, if there's some sort of time crunch, somebody needs a closing, we can.
Unless you make a deal that we can just.
Okay, so they have a motion to table.
Some vote.
Say.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion table? Okay, thank you. Kevin, anything else?
Um, I, um, nothing else on this one here.
Okay, so then all in favor of the motion table?
Okay.
Aye, bluffit, aye, okay, you have another item.
I have another item, we're looking to approve two licenses, um, one for grazing and one for harvesting of hay at the Northern Heights open space up in North Gelfer, uh, of Crooked Hill Road. Uh, the, that commission put together bids, um, which got sent out, uh, received, um, two replies back for each activity. And they are recommending that for the grazing area. Uh, make sure we get in the right order here. Yeah, so the grazing area, um, which is thirty-three acres, they're recommending that that one, that license be issued to Michael Esposito for eighty-five dollars per acre for a yearly license fee of two thousand eight hundred and five dollars. And the commission reviewed the applications at their last meeting.
Do we take both licenses together or?
Yeah, whatever you guys wanna do and then.
And the grazing one, who maintains the fencing?
It's, they're required to maintain the fencing.
Part of.
Part of their license, they're.
Okay.
It's their operation, any, the well, anything with that, they're required to maintain anything with that piece.
So they sign an, an annual license?
There's a, this will be a five-year license?
Five-year license, okay. So there's paperwork delineating everybody's.
Correct.
Effective responsibilities to that point.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the second license is being issued, uh, for Northern Heights, this is the agricultural area, which is for hay license. Um, three B ranch for thirty, uh, thirty-five acres for fifty dollars an acre for an annual license fee of seventeen, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, three B ranks has been doing this one for, probably about ten years or so. And there've been no issues there.
So this is one of those little circumstances, we have some open space that actually throws off a little bit of revenue.
Little bit of revenue when they maintain the fields and grass and stuff like that, get some use on it there. Help maintain agri-agriculture in Gelfer.
Fantastic, right. And I have a motion.
There's been a lot of discussion about hay and.
Sorry.
No.
Sorry.
Second.
Right. Oh.
It just that there's been a lot of discussion about hay fields around town, both town owned and land trust owned. Good to hear that some of them are.
A lot of them are disappearing and they're buying hay from out west, you know, farmers are.
That seems crazy.
Yeah.
Oh, the green hills. Yeah, but, you know, it's not just hay, it's maintaining the field.
Yeah, no, yeah. And then it's, it's probably a nice space.
It's gorgeous, yeah, it's a nice gorgeous area up there, you're up on the mountain there, or hillside there, and you have some good views towards, during.
Taking care of that, keeping that going. Any, so any further discussion? All in favor of the motion on the table? Aye? opposed? No. Kevin, thank you.
Yep.
See you two weeks or sooner, if there's any urgency, buddy. Just let.
Yeah, we'll let Peter look it over and we'll, uh, work with Peter and let you guys know.
Yeah.
Mission. And just one activity here, uh, this morning we started the tree planting program uh, for the hundred trees in the town center, uh, we just started in front of the businesses downtown and working away across the highway. Contractors actually gonna like start in the morning, do about five or six trees in front of the stores and then take off to Route seventy-seven for the remainder of the day, so we're not doing a full disturbance of the, the shops there. So trying to get, hit the center of town while it's not that busy and then disappearing and then come back the next morning. So that's gonna be a sort of leapfrog approach there, so.
Just in time for some rain this week.
Yes.
So this is the traditional, uh, inappropriate time of year of the plant?
Definitely is, yeah, we had to cut, hit the summer, but when we got the, um, permit from DOT, which ended June and it just wasn't the right time to start planting and became a dry summer, which was a good choice, we decided to hold off on that piece there.
Thanks for that, huh?
Thank you.
Just, um, jealous with the.
Morning again. Coming to you, I'm looking request to, um, hire an engineer to do a redesign of the repair for the transfer station, um. You recall, we had hired one of our on-call engineers about a year ago or so, um, we've found some concrete falling and some, uh, decaying beams underneath the scale house building. They developed a design. Um, we put it out to bid, we had two people attend the pre-bid meeting, but then no one bid on it. And then, um, I reached out to Gordian, which is a on-call, um, contract with the, um, capital region cog um, to see if they had a contractor who can look at it. Um, they satisfy all the bid requirements because they've already pre-bid, kinda all the building repair work. Um, so they sent along our contractor to take a look at it. He came up twice with his, it's a complicated job the way it was designed, and, um, he gave me a, a quote, not a pro, written proposal of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to fix this thing. So, I could probably replace the whole building for that, so or at least I could have in, in simpler times. So, I, um, you know, I, I again reached out to our design engineer and I'm like, look, can't we just put a support beam under the existing beam instead of removing the existing beam and it, which requires, you know, supporting the whole building and, you know, yada, yada. They, they weren't, they weren't agreeable to redesigning it, to what, interestingly enough, on the other side of the hopper, whi- which is like a similar situation, and I think in the nineties they put another beam under the beam. And it's been fine since, so. Um, the end, so the contractor from Gordian went out with his engineer to look at it and, um, his engineer felt it was a reasonable approach to just support the existing beam instead of taking the whole building apart to replace the beam. So that's what you have before, before you was a proposal for just over three thousand dollars to hire this engineer to go ahead and design that repair. Um, going this route, we will be tied into the Gordian contractor to do the repair and not have to repit it through a public bid of our own. It'll be through this fitting process that was already taken place through the capital cog. He's assured me that the cost will be very significantly less than the two hundred and eighty-five quoted. Um, the original engineer, just to be totally transparent, he was able to get a contractor he knows to go out and look at it. He looked at it and came up with a price of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do this repair, so. Um, I still think that's quite exorbitant and once you take the building apart, who knows what we're gonna find? So, I'd really like to just go with this approach to just support the existing beam with another beam and kinda, and then do some concrete repairs and uh, other repairs to prevent water from getting in there for, you know, in the future and just kinda get this thing.
This building that you're talking about is the little office space connected. I'm trying to figure out why is it over, number one, why is it over mechanic of it? I know there's a restroom in there, so there must be a subject issue.
No, no, so when you look at the building, when you drive up, there's the scale house where you go in the door and, and pay, you know, with the gentleman.
It's not the scale.
No, it is. But if you look to the left of this, that building, it's all one building. There's the opening where you dump your trash, that's the hopper. So the building supports the scale house office as well as the hopper. And underneath the hopper is a compactor and truck. So when you drive over, um, the left side, looking at the building from the street, you're actually going over a little bridge, there's a bridge, because that's open space underneath as well. So it's those, those, that little bridge is made up of pre-stressed concrete, and that's where the concrete is falling off and dropping. So that needs to be just patched. And then where the little wall is where you then dump your trash, that's where the building starts. And that, underneath that wall is where the beam is a problem.
All right.
And so, when you're underneath the building, there's more open space because there's the area where you drive as well, but.
That explains a lot.
So it's, it's the beam underneath that short wall where you, where the opening is to dump your trash from your car. That beam needs to be reinforced because it's, um, it, and what's happened is where the, the driveway ends and the building begins, it wasn't sealed and the water was getting in from, into that area and, and it's been rotting the steel since. So we're trying to just fix that so it doesn't have a failure. Um, and as well as patch up the concrete that's spalling, um, right now because of the water intrusion. So we're gonna fix the water intrusion, fix the spalling concrete, and hopefully have a design where we just reinforce that beam with another beam underneath it in a couple columns. So you're not gonna see it from, you know, above, it's gonna be all underneath where the hopper is.
Yeah, it's plenty of water.
Yeah.
Cause I have my initial reaction, a little, just a little building.
It's actually a bigger bill, I didn't, you know, like, you don't realize it until you go underneath there, like, there's actually a bridge where people are driving over that.
Why is that space used for something?
That's where the compactor is, the compactor is underneath.
On that side?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought the compactor was on the truck side.
Uh, there's the, there's the hopper, and then the compactor pushes it in. So part of the park compactor is on that side and then the truck's on the other side.
So the compact is essentially under the driveway where you pull up.
Yeah.
That makes sense because then the tractor trailer is under there and then.
Yeah, you got, you got the compactor, the hopper, and then you have the truck, so.
Shoving it toward the front of the truck.
And it's, yeah, and it's, it goes underneath the hopper because you gotta drop in the hopper, then swipes through under the hopper into the truck.
If, if, if we were all like eight years old, we would do this, state of the week, because they could love this. They're gonna bring those kids down there to watch it.
I remember when they used to have a ladder. Well, I went in.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, so.
Talk about that.
All right, so the bottom line is you need a motion for three thousand.
Does that alleviate the need because you're still gonna support the building over those?
Yeah, yeah, until, yeah, I think, you know, I'm gonna start putting in my budget, we're gonna have to have some future. Right now, the good thing is we're having a study done and it's being paid for by cog of the entire operations of the transfer station. Um, so it'd be interesting to see what they come up with. Obviously, our trash needs have decreased significantly with the unit-based pricing program, so that compactor and all that.
I mentioned the food.
Isn't as needed as it was back in the day when we used to have waders dropping there as well as, you know, like, so our, our trash, um, volume has decreased significantly. So there may be future options because the compactor is also a big nut to keep running and ma- maintained and. Maintained and such, so it's may not really be needed in the future.
How about the scale up, well, that was a good off subject. How about the scale operation, is that as necessary as it was in the past?
Yeah, that's for our bulky, that's how we charge for our bulky and our bulky is our biggest um. Revenue and expenditure at the transfer station. It's it's um, we're, we have about thirty five thousand dollars a month of um expenditures for bulky disposal.
I'll ask another side question, um. The food waste um you said is working, but you also said that you were gonna resume or begin again discussion with haulers about. Those of us who have a a person, a a commercial service. Come and take our refuse.
Yeah, you, if you recall, you you appointed a a task force for that, so we've been meeting monthly with them. Um and trying to formulate a plan, we're also waiting on a grant that we applied to deep. For some grant monies to help kick that type of program off, so we're hoping they'll improve that. Yeah, we're continuing to work on that as well, but yeah, so this is just for this. You know, design for the station repair and then once we get a design and a proposal, I'll be back to you with hopefully a more reasonable cost to fix this thing.
And the initial um, I don't wanna say confusion, but the initial change for people was a little bit. Cut confusing to them in the beginning, but it's basically sort of evened out.
Uh with the uniform face pricing and the blue bags, yeah, it's been good, I've reached out to the police department, we're probably gonna. We've had some people who just refuse to cooperate. So we're probably gonna come back, they had a good idea, because right now it's an infraction, it's, you know, you're basically stealing service. So they'd have to go through the New Haven court system to process that, which isn't worth doing for a three dollar. So we're probably gonna, they had a good idea to probably create a local ordinance. So they can just issue fines to people and then we can have a little more enforcement. Yeah, people just, some people are just refusing, we even had some people buy. Blue bags off of Amazon and try and use those bags, which means they're not paying our fee, you know, so. It's not a lot of people, but um police department might be doing a video on their Facebook or, you know, their social media soon. Because I was talking with them about how can we, you know. Deal with this, you know, we're almost one year in now and there's really no excuse for.
Who who knew this would be the busiest topic, but is accessibility the bags, I mean, there was a moment.
It's been a challenge, um.
Is there some way we could help the retailers who were reluctant to 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 keep?
There's there's state law doesn't allow us, allow them to tack on the charge for credit cards, so we had. Page and rings and drop out of the program because they felt like they were bearing the burden of the credit card. Waste zero feels like that should be a kind of a cost of doing business thing, but whatever, um. We're currently trying to get Target on board to sell, um Matt's been trying, you know, some of their people since they just moved into town. It's been unsuccessful so far to try and get that, um but they are available at Walgreens, CVS. And Big Y, uh Big Y, you go to the to the checkout or the the customer service desk. And then they're also available at Stop and Shop at the customer service.
Why not, why not at the?
At the transfer station.
Cause I I so have you ever done inventory control? We're not a business and we don't have inventory control. Um you know, we're still considering that if it's really is, like, we can't get, like, say, target on board or.
Pain, a lot of small transactions are colossal pain.
And not and not only that, but keep in inventory, because like I was, when we we decided to sell at the transfer station at the beginning of the program. Because they weren't in the other places in a timely enough manner to start the program, which we already announced. And just trying to keep. Inventory control there, the guys, you know, they don't, you know, you're, you need to have like inventory control systems, which. Which stores have, retail stores have. Um and then getting orders in in a timely manner, so you you're always inventoried and then making those transactions. It was, it it's a lot, so um but it's not off the table, it's always a consideration, but we're really, the way these. Systems across the country are set up is you're supposed to have your retail partners, you know, selling the bags for you. The challenge here is we don't have that many retailers in our area, you know, like it's just a matter of fact, um. So we're still working on it. But they are available, I think that stores have finally gotten over, some of them have gone to automatic. Um deliveries so that they're not, you know, waiting until they're out before they order more and things like that, so. My understanding is I think the inventory has been kept up in most of the stores where for a while there, the stores. Were letting it run out before they ordered more and then it'd take a few days to get the order, so then people can't buy them, you know, that's not good, so. I think that's been worked out and we're hoping to try and get, like I said, co- target on board and if we can find any others.
Maybe fresh market would be another place.
Yeah, we could probably reach out to them and I'm and I'm open to any other.
Aren't vending machines?
Gosh, I was thinking that same thing.
Well, vending machines are are, you still have the inventory, you still have to fill them, so it's not an off the topic.
Well, that would take care of your inventory thing.
No, but someone has to stock them, you know what I mean? Well, yes.
And and how many people work at the transfer station at any given time in that office?
We usually only have one person in the scale house. Um on on weekends, we have we have three, we have three full time people. Okay. So um and then we have one part timer who's there for the busy days, um so it's just. And there's no place to store the bags there, there's no, you know.
And the other point, I mean stating the obvious, but by the time you're there, you've already got your garbage ready to go, like it doesn't, what are you gonna do, put it loose? Run in and get a bag?
And also you have to remember, like, well.
People are at the other places in town be- before next.
Well, I guess if if somebody obviously uses. Uh that's the only, I I think it's been a great system except for that.
Yeah, it's been a challenge.
Finding the bag, I mean, any place I've been, they don't have. They'll live on size. Uh that's been the only challenge I've had, so it's like you're working on it, it's got.
It's been a.
I would think a vending machine of some sort would take a lot of the pressure off.
It would.
Having to make each individual.
But someone needs to stock the vending machine and store the material. Store the inventory, we're not. Equipped for that and we stopped doing cash sales at the transfer station because we're not supposed to be.
And I agree with that part.
You know, there's there's bond, there's there's value in those bags, so you can't just leave them laying around anywhere, because if someone takes them, they're worth something. You know, so it's it's been a, it's been a struggle.
But I could see where, you know, when you start worrying about the details of it, it's a struggle, but uh. I I think it does need some.
Well, I think it's been better, I mean, if it hasn't been better, then please let me know, but it's been, um, you know, like I said, a lot of the stores are.
I'm gonna just effectively bought a year's supply, so at least I don't have.
Well, that, yeah, people should be stocking up so that they're not having to run when they run out, you know, like that's like.
Honestly, without without the food waste, trash is just a simpler situation, it's not as stinky, it's just a lot better to manage. We keep, I keep my blue rolls in like outside trash can. Open bag, so it's just, it's, to your point, we always have a few extras. But anyway, thank you, I love the vending machine.
We're gonna keep looking into it, you know, hopefully we can get.
Do we, uh, do we, I don't think we voted on this. Yeah, I think we have, let's make sure we had a motion for a second, thank you. Uh for this three thousand dollars for this Gordian.
For the design of the.
And then and their their mission is to get us a design.
Give us a a proposal.
Related contractor, this B M P.
Yes, their their B M P works works under the Gordian contract. And uh we'll be contracting with B M P directly, but it's all been vetted through Gordian and then we'll get a proposal from B M P, which we'll have to bring back to you. Or football.
Any any further questions on the matter at end? Okay, all in favor? Thanks, make our.
I'll keep working on it.
All right.
And trust me, I know nothing about this design, even though the agenda says I do.
We sell the market red.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
That's okay, so the agenda should read that I'm here to propose and get an approval for um. A seven hundred fifty foot patio that we had planned. Back when we were doing the fun brick fundraiser for Jacobs and Bitner Park playgrounds.
Yeah, that's what mine says.
It does?
Yeah, we have that.
Park patio quotes.
Oh, so mine says that discussing take possible action on transfer stations.
Yeah, mine does.
That's there, but above it is the what is your stuff.
So um, yeah, the public has been very patient with me. Because we've been putting so much effort into Jacob's speech and getting that finalized and opening, so we started the. Playground uh fundraiser, brick fundraiser um at Jacobs first, because we were just so involved in the project at the time. We did the walkway, it has everybody, so about a hundred and five bricks that were purchased for there. And there were approximately sixty five bricks purchased for Bitner Park, which. Brought in a total of approximately twenty two thousand dollars for the fundraiser. Um that paid for the walkway at Jacobs and will pay for the patio at Bitner. So I finally got the three quotes that are quite different. Um and the lowest bidder is here in Guilford. And this coastal concrete masonry was really excited that I got in touch with them and more than. Willing to work with us um for labor and material costing ten thousand six hundred.
And there's a little drawing or little photograph of what it's like, we know the fight option one, is that?
It it's not it, I I think that um basically the scope of work is all the same. But we haven't picked a product yet, obviously, we wanted to look very similar to the walkway that was already constructed there and which we used. Um quite a few of the um personalized bricks that were put in the Bitner playground years ago that were still intact. So they were still intact, we still have a pile of those left as well, so once we get the inventory. That they'll they'll fit within the seven hundred fifty square foot area. Uh most likely, it'll be on the outskirts of the patio, because you wouldn't want to pick the tables on top of the bricks, right, you'd wanna be able to see who. Purchase them. Um but we'd like to get started, people have been calling my office left and right, wondering what happened to their brick that they purchased over. Over the winter, um. We may, in the future, people have still been calling about the walkway at Jacobs if they can purchase a brick there. Now, we haven't reopened that, but there's still so much room to that walkway, that's something that we may consider. Um in the future, when things slow down.
Bricks are very popular.
Yeah.
At the library in two thousand eight and people are still buying them twenty, almost twenty years.
Yeah, it's a great way to get that.
It's a way to give back without spending a lot of money, but contributing to your town.
Yeah, yeah, and we think this is gonna be, I real- it's a, it's an area that's just, just this grassy area that. Um you know, it'll 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 transform itself into a nice little patio. Um which we don't have currently over there, we have a few benches, uh but not really a nice picnic area.
So can, do you mind if we discuss the request from one of the residents earlier about paving the parking lot?
Sure.
So you had put it into twenty six, twenty seven budget and it got knocked out?
No, I put it into my twenty five, twenty six, which is this. Fiscal twenty six, I believe it was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars to pave it. And it just didn't make it through the process.
I I think, you know, improving it and I know about the ruts and things like that, but I would struggle with paving it. Uh it's a lot of impervious area near wetlands that uh. You know, then you're gonna be piling it, then you're gonna be salting it, and it's all just gonna flow right into that river there, so I think through. Or I paved it, I I think it needs improvement in maintenance and I know that's expensive on an annual basis. But uh paving that, that that's a big area to to make in purchase. I mean, the golf course, you know, decided to, you know, undo it, but I struggle with that.
Is it, aren't there alternatives like stones and stuff, that, well, anyway, um so. Was it in the capital plan or you're operating?
There's this little hexagonal grid.
Which we're considering at Jacobs.
And and that has some.
Yeah, and you fill that with.
Through them, but anyway, we're here, can I get? Happy to talk about all this, I'd like to just, we have a proposal for this coastal concrete and masonry for ten thousand six hundred dollars?
Hey Lou, Lou. Yeah. Pete, Pete, I'm sorry to inter- intercept here, you know, I I just checked the town website and. The agenda that appears on there, you know, has Pam discussing the same thing as Janice. And I I don't see anything on that agenda um that discusses. I am, so I I don't know if Brendan or or Karen would know if that was added i- in a timely ma- manner for today's agenda. Now, it's it's a quick fix with uh. I think that would be safest to do that.
I'll move that we added.
Okay, any discussion on the motion to add this item for this paving at Bitner?
I did, I should.
All right, all in favor, so it's on the agenda, thanks Pete.
Thank you.
Now I'll move it.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Thank you, all in favor? Pave away. Um yeah, good, the paving, the the, that is a pretty big parking lot.
It is.
Hello. We have all sorts of.
I'd just like to uh let you aware that the paving of Bitner Park for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is in our bonding package. That money has already been appropriated through authorization of bonding.
Oh, did not know that.
That's good.
Excellent, so that's so. Yeah, so it's like maybe, um.
Don't know if that makes a difference.
Money's in the pipeline, has that project been approved?
It still needs to go through your approval process, but the authorization to fund the project is already there.
That's great, okay, so is bonded money, that's interesting, wasn't in our budget of capital.
Correct, it was moved into bonding.
That's an interesting solution, okay, thank you, very helpful, we can all think about that, we want that to look now.
We can use that money for.
Julie will be stunned that the action that this board has taken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, all set.
I'm sure we'll talk about pickleball a little bit, we're happy to talk about.
But I will, we will be looking into that um hexagonal, um. And I'll certainly look into that as well.
Here's a number of options.
Um but I think it, I think it may be more more expensive.
Probably is, everything is.
Of course, but um we were.
The river right there, so.
Dave Castro was already looking into that for Jacobs, because really Jacobs, the same thing, there's the the potholes every single year. And how can we improve that so that? But works doesn't have to spend time doing that, we don't have to spend time doing that, if we can come up with this solution, that that this just takes care of both. Private.
There's a possibility of, you know, maybe paving central Bit- Bit for now, maybe it's a little more complicated. Layup, but I mean, it's it's a rectangle, if you pave the center area and leave the sides.
And stay away from the.
There's a, it it taking consideration.
Right, I agree, I agree. Yeah, I agree, and we also are looking for. Shelter and I'll put another proposal in for like a solar bathroom this year too, so we're we're looking at all that, we're not turning our heads to it. All right, thanks again.
Thanks a lot. All right, that brings us to appointments and resignations. Um I'm gonna read this whole item regarding Mr. Deeds, discussion they possible action clarify the appointment of Robert Deeds as a regular member. Of the Guilford Lakes Golf Course Commission, replace a term limited seat. Term to expire on September thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, I think what happened is that term limited fees wasn't quite clear. Or we didn't vote on it, we didn't have a vote, I don't, I'm not quite sure why this is here.
Because I, it's my fault I neglected to clarify that when I prepared the agenda, so that um uh we were asked to just clarify your motion.
But just confirm that we intended to appoint him to the seat?
That it was um, sorry, I have the.
Term limited?
Yeah, it was a term limited seat, yeah, sorry. Yeah, so I apologize, that was my oversight when I prepared the agenda.
The last time.
Yeah.
The term limited person resigned. And now that's vacant, is that what that means?
Yeah, Karen, do you remember if that was?
Um I'd have to go back and look, um let me see if I can figure that out.
We we go over, pass over that and come back to it.
Yes, good, so thank you.
So Karen, we'll we'll delay our vote, okay, and you can check it.
All right. All right, well, we'll do that anyway, and circle back, and the next one is, is a little bit of an issue with too, it says, the agenda says discuss and take. Action to amend the appointment of Amanda Pierce, which I understand is to the Harbor. Management Commission, yes, Karen?
Yes, um, and actually, I apologize, cause Matt's not here, I wasn't clear myself about what the issue was with that, so I don't know if you wanna wait on that, just to, till Matt's back to clarify.
Yeah, Matt has all the information on that, and you discussed it with me briefly, but I don't wanna uh.
That, that.
Matt knows what's going on and we're not, we do want her, but there's um, uh, some information that we need to, yeah, let's.
I think it's a timing question, when the seat is available.
Yes. Right.
Not a, not a function of whether people. Would there was some momentum to accept the nomination, so we're gonna table that one, yes, can I get a motion to table, that's what we gotta do?
Second.
Okay, and Karen, you're gonna get back to us with Dietz, cause.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to figure that out for you right now.
Thank you. Brings us to resignation of Herbert Bernstein from the Marina Commission.
Uh, I make the motion to accept the resignation with uh, with thanks uh, for his service.
Right, second.
Uh, any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, next one is accept the appointment of Sarah Shrewsbury to the inland wetlands. Oh, sorry. Catherine O'Keefe, Human Services.
Some moved.
Resigning.
Oh, resignation, I'm sorry.
Yeah. With appreciation and regret, okay, moved and seconded, all in favor of accepting the resignation, aye. All right, now we got Sarah Shrewsbury for the inland wetlands. I'll move. Motion. Filling the, I just so we're clear, Sarah will be filling the position left vacant by Kevin Clark, so this is also, sounds like a uh, a. You know, filling an existing position, it's not gonna be a full term, she'll come up later, but to accept that, yes, I move. Second.
Second.
All in favor for Sarah Shrewsbury?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next brings us to Cindy Preble. Uh, point, accept the appointment for the position of Guilford Housing Authority. Can we get a motion first and then we'll see what we're gonna do?
Second.
Okay, my, my thoughts are this, Sandy, if there is a restriction on being able to. Sit on both positions at one point, given the sort of the urgency presented uh by Gloria. I would, I would be in favor of accepting this and sort of letting it sort out.
All right.
Down the line, you can either stay on one or the other, or both.
I probably that is. Gloria stated that there was a resignation coming.
Right.
I would like based on that resignation.
I think there's already an opening. And there's a second resignation, that was her concern, there's an opening right now, as I heard it. And she's concerned if we don't fill this, then they're gonna be down to three, and they're gonna be running into quorum problem, so I think there's some.
Well, but you talked, she said this month, so I. I don't know, it just seemed to me that this appointment ought to be based on that resignation, if that's part of what's happening.
True, and if, if there is a conflict of some sort, it should be relatively easy for Peter to look at it.
Yeah.
Sort of that. I mean, we meet again, we meet again in two weeks.
Yeah.
We could always again.
Sort out those two issues.
To.
Yeah.
Listen to some crazy.
Well, there's three would be in, three would be a quorum, it's just that they're snug.
Right, and the, and the other, I think I agree to wait a little bit, um. Cindy herself, if it comes down to this thing about she can either be one or the other, she needs to at least have that information.
Yeah, she should decide.
Because she might decide that she'd rather stay on A H C, I, I don't know, but.
Right.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
See, there's enough questions and.
Yeah.
Reasons to wait, you know, one meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess we need a subsequent motion to table. That motion to accept. Right, that's what we're doing?
I'll modify, did I make much?
I have the motion.
Yeah.
And for table.
Motion to table, second, okay, great, we're gonna table, all in favor of tabling? Aye, I get it, it's too bad, but I totally get it. Um. What do we know about Mr. Dietz, I think it's.
So I just. I just checked Lou, um, so yeah, there was a person who had served two full terms, uh, their term actually had expired September of twenty four. So Mr. Dietz is then replacing that seat. Cause a person cannot be reappointed because they're, they were term limited, they had served two full terms, but you serve until you're reappointed. So Mr. Dietz would fill out a term that started October first of twenty four through September thirtieth of twenty eight.
So he's already a year into the term. Is, is this.
Yeah, well, the, the person just sir, the other, the person preceding him served until reappointed, until someone else was appointed, so, yeah.
Okay, so the better way is, as it's written. This is being nominated. Um, there was momentum to approve him.
Right.
And. They were making clear that this term will expire on September thirty of twenty twenty eight, which is, feels like it's shorter, but that's as a result of this scheduling problem, the term.
What do you need, do you need a motion?
We need a motion that he's being approved for a seat that expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. Move by motion, okay.
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Sorry for the confusion, cause.
No worries, thanks for getting underneath it.
Yep.
All in favor of approving that motion on the table, aye? Okay. Did we put anything else aside? Uh, we have requests for use of town property then. The annual tree lighting for December fifth, my goodness, this always makes me nervous. Here we are.
Yes. Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the tree lighting on the green December five, all in favor? Aye. Use of the greens, ah, here we go, Rotary Frosty Five K, January one, twenty twenty six, I'd like to make that motion.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor of that use of the green? Aye.
Aye.
Requested, discuss and take action to approve a request for sign from O L M Prep, advertising its open house on October nineteenth. Sign placement. October sixth, we'll see today.
Some moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next is discuss and take action. For a sign of the green from Guilford Garden Club, advertising their holiday boutique on December five.
Some moved. Second.
Any further discussion on that, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Request to take action to approve a sign from the Guilford Community Fund for their annual fundraiser, November sixth, twenty twenty five through March one. Twenty twenty six, that's, oh, it's upside down. Uh, okay, all in favor of the Guilford Community Fund, you having a sign?
This comment for southwest corner is specified, so it's not the normal sign, they, they've been, it's, it's. Okay, so that kind of says a sign.
I guess it's a permanent.
Okay, I don't have, I have no issue with it at all.
It's obviously.
Oh, yeah, I assume it's the, it's such a long.
Yeah, that's right, that caught me too.
Goodness, the number six did much first.
It's a little house, and yeah.
Yeah, I can.
Building is.
Yep. So it's really, I mean, I don't have any problem, I don't wanna hold it up, but it's not really a sign, it's more the nature of the unattended display kind of, really, it's, I mean.
I don't remember this coming up before, they must have, they must have been doing it in the past.
I do remember it coming up, but I.
They've been doing it, I think, for a very long time.
Yes, they have.
And it's. If we have a second.
Doesn't fit the criteria of the two weeks of a sign. It's a still on form.
You know, it's possibly grandmothered or grandfathered in, because the rules for signs on the green changed about fifteen years ago. Cause people just used to put up any old signs, and now they're regulated with time and you sign up for them and all that, and maybe this was just.
Oh, you're thinking it requires brothers.
Well, there's another form for the unattended display, which I think is what this is, can we just approve it as well as this? I mean.
Well, they are looking for this by November sixth, uh, they certainly have time for this to come up on our next meeting, if, I would. I don't wanna just substitute impose on somebody with, they gotta see what those form requirements are. And, and for saying they use the wrong form, which is an excellent point. I think we send it back to them and say, fill out this form. And bring it to us in two weeks. So the, the motion to approve, interestingly, the way to do this would just be to say the motion.
Denied without prejudice.
Denied, denied without prejudice, to reapply. With.
Yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, send the message that, you know, yes, you can do it, but get it right.
Right, okay, so. The motion then on the floor is denied without prejudice? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks. The tree lighting is next, eight point six, December five.
Could you just, excuse me, but could you just highlight Karen that she understands that what we're trying to say?
Yes, she's not on it at the moment.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, she, she goes, Karen, you got that?
I'm here, yep, yeah.
We're, we're gonna communicate.
Brandon, Brandon's, Brandon's starting to take the minute, so we'll make sure that.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So speaking of, back to the community phone. All right, so we have uh, the annual.
Eight point six.
Eight point six, a sign for the annual tree lighting. Sign placement November twenty one, and the tree lighting is December fifth.
I'm moving.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, discuss and take action, sign of the green, oh, we, oh, they want a sign for the Frosty Five K, sign placement December eighteenth.
Some moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And. Eight point eight. Sign for Guilford Interfaith Volunteers Patriotic Veterans Dinner. Oh.
They didn't, they didn't put the dates up.
Yeah, hold on, let's see if it's on the.
Two weeks before, yeah, say, so. So, so be at the end of October. It's okay.
Yeah, it, it looks like, it looks like that's October twenty fifth is the date of the activity, so this is gonna go up. Soon.
The activities are.
Oh, that's the disc golf. Okay. So the veterans dinner is November eleventh, they want it up two day, two weeks before.
Right.
We're approving eight point eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is also Guilford Interfaith Volunteers Disc Golf Tournament. Which is scheduled for October twenty fifth, and again, sign placement two weeks before. Uh. So.
Some moved.
Second. Second, the disc golf sign? All in favor?
Aye.
Lot of signs.
Yeah.
Shoreline Arts Alliance Concert Request, gotta go read the application, this is date of the activity is November one. Um, I'm presuming two weeks before for the sign. It says Broad Street, but let's assume it's two weeks before November one. All in favor of eight point ten?
Aye.
Aye. And discuss and take action for the Shoreline Arts Trail Open Studios event. Again, the date is indicated there, but this is date of activity is November fifteenth and sixteenth, sign placement November third. Motion please?
Some moved, second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And. Eight point twelve, the Guilford Keeping Society is having a stunning creek quarry tour, date of the activity is October eighteenth. Sign placement, sign placement in October. I think it was there, I drove down, I would, I will make a motion to approve that retroactively.
Yeah.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to the end of our scheduled agenda, any. Committee reports, Public Works, there's a report from them as to all their. Efforts, any thoughts there? Um. Or respondents? Nothing scheduled, does anybody have any of interest in groups?
Tomorrow, no, Thursday, I keep thinking, Thursday. Just checking. It's me, it's another one. Um. Thursday at seven o'clock in this room, um, the Community Conversation Committee, which is a subset of the Affordable Housing Commission. Is sponsoring um, a discussion um, featuring a local developer, Bill Freeman, who's also on P, P and Z. And he will be discussing, etc., relative to um, horrible housing issues in Guilford, and it's open to anyone starting at seven. And uh, on, on Wednesday at six o'clock, um, Michael Harken, is it Harkins or Harkin? Well, Mike Harkin, he's done a lot of work for the town, he's also working for Neighborhood New Horizons, which is the not-for-profit developer of the Woodbury. He's going to be giving an update on some of the activities around that project, and it's a Zoom meeting only, um. And it starts at six, um, so I'm going to be zooming into that, cause I wanna hear what he has to say, and I will report back to you.
Definitely.
And uh, that's all I have to say.
Fantastic. You should have opened up before we conclude to public forum. I've already had the chance on the front end, thank you, any uh. Old business? New business? We just pointed out, it's November, November's coming, November fourth is an election, so there's lots of information out there, everybody should. Should engage uh themselves to find out what they need to know, um, municipal elections don't get quite the attention, but some of these other. State and national things do, but they're very important, so please engage.
A Guilford citizen said, I don't see any information about the candidates from any of the parties, and I said, well, Patch, I believe, has reached out to all three parties, I believe. For the fourth person.
On websites, have information.
Yeah, and their individual websites have it, and so there is information out there.